All right, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the July, oh, sorry, this is the July 11th, 2022 Euclid Township Board of Supervisors monthly meeting. We'll go ahead and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Just so you're aware, this meeting is being recorded. And for our attendees that are joining us online, if you have any questions or comments, please use the hand raise function and we will unmute you when it's time for public comment. All right, the first item on tonight's agenda is approval of the minutes of our June 13th, 2022 meeting. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes?
So moved.
I have one correction for the minutes. If I can make that a motion to approve the minutes with one correction. Under the Euclid ambulance funding formula section, it states that the $30,000 donation is based off of the new funding formula. And actually, it is based off of Euclid ambulances ask for us this year and that the funding formula is being considered by the board. It would result in a much higher figure. Just wanted that change to be made.
Do we need to second her motion?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of approval of the June 13th meeting minutes with amendment as Chair Baumann stated?
Aye.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Okay, and for our monthly reports, starting with the Euclid Township Police?
Thank you and good evening. For the month of June 2022, the Euclid Township Police Department officers documented 1,014 entries in the Police Department Call Reporting System. During the reporting period, the officers issued 130 traffic citations. They investigated 28 motor vehicle crashes and they arrested 17 individuals. The officers conducted two motor carrier details at the way station resulting in 750 commercial vehicles being weighed, six of which were found to be overweight. During the detail, the officers also performed 13 inspections and found numerous violations. The Euclid Township Police Department was assisted at the details by members of the West Whiteland Township Police Department, the West Town East Goshen Regional Police Department, and the East Town Township Police Department. During the reporting period, Sergeant McBride conducted two commercial vehicle inspections during his normal workdays. No violations were found, so Sergeant McBride issued what are called Commercial Vehicle Safety Alliance stickers. I know that we often talk about the punitive result of a lot of the inspections that are performed on the commercial motor vehicles. And so I wanted to make mention that there's also a portion of that process that recognizes trucking owner operators and trucking companies for having equipment that is in good order as well. And they have the ability then to, when they successfully pass an inspection, to receive a CVSA sticker. That sticker goes on the side of their vehicle that they're operating on. And then it's likely as they continue during their normal workdays and go through similar incidents of either going through a way station or areas where commercial motor vehicle inspections are being performed, they would likely not be re-inspected and have to waste potentially hours out of their day going through an inspection when they've just successfully passed one. And that lasts for approximately one quarter. There's nothing to suggest that another agency can't inspect that vehicle. It's just to give that agency an indication to know that the vehicle was recently inspected. It can be looked up in documentation and maybe passed along for having good working equipment. So we just wanted to mention that. Year to date, the Police Department officers have documented 6,237 calls in our call reporting system. They've arrested 73 individuals. They've issued 600 traffic citations. They've written 151 written warnings. They've investigated 181 crashes and they've weighed 1,328 commercial motor vehicles. And lastly, we did have one Narcan administration for the month. And that's my report.
Thank you, Chief. The Treasurer?
Good evening. Through the month of June, in the general fund, we have collected just under 58% of our budgeted revenues and have spent just over 47% of our budgeted expenditures.
Thank you. Public Works?
Thank you. For the month of June, the daily average flow to the downtown treatment plant was approximately 1.5 million gallons per day. There were no new sewer connections to the Darif Treatment Facility or the Eagleview Wastewater Treatment Plant. For the month of June, the township perceived 3.19 inches of rain, the normal for June being 4.2. So just under for normal. Year to date, we're at 22.5 inches, with the average being 20.47. So we're still minus 1.8 inches for the year in Euclid Township. The department responded to 155 PA one calls for the month of June. Rock lined the spillway in the Lightfoot cul-de-sac area, as well as cleared catch basins in advance of storms on June 14th. The Public Works Department completed the stormwater repairs in the Williamsburg Development and added blacktop to sunken areas of Redway on Cornell, Whitford, Connery, Taylor. And this is just done until complete repairs can be made. The department was out cutting trees and treelands back on Brittany and Evan saddle and township line and on Peck and Connery's as well. And then finally, completed all state inspections as needed, as well as regular vehicle maintenance for them.
Great, thank you. Fire Marshals report?
For the month of June, the Euclid Park issued 109 four permits for construction activities. Completed a total of 134 inspections, 69 used and occupancy certificates were issued. And the Fire Marshal responded to 17 incidents during working hours and investigated two open burns.
Thank you. Lionville Fire Company?
Yes, for the month of June, Lionville Park responded to 64 incidents, 40 in Euclid, 11 in number Euclid, 5 in West Whiteland, 8 in other municipalities, for a total of year to date of 309.
Great, thank you. And do we have anyone from Euclid Ambulance? Or online? No? No, okay. Is there a motion to approve the reports?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any comments or discussion? From the public? Nope. Seeing none, all in favor of motion to approve the reports?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, moving on to the business for tonight's meeting. First up, we have the Devon Drive traffic update.
This is the very current item on our rest of the report. Feeling real now since our last meeting was that this will should be a sketch plan for improvements to the townhouse by school, which traffic was discussed heavily and we were working on the establishment of the school zone on that. So they're going to be working through some of the traffic control issues that kind of play in that area. Hopefully the submission of this plan will be available.
Scott, when, when, what's the timeline here for some of this? Do we know yet?
Right now, we're almost finished. I'm sure as far as we, I think we're probably a little away from formal submission of the development plan. They did ask for preliminary final review from the Planning Commission after reading last Wednesday. And they'll be before the board assesses that.
And in addition to that comment, I just wanted to add, this was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting, and I believe that that is available online for YouTube, on YouTube, for those that wanted to go back and get some of the details from that detailed discussion. I think the discussion regarding the request for a full traffic study kind of pushed the timeline into the September range because they can't do a proper traffic study without school being in session. But I heard a lot of really good comments about everyone being in agreeance that this is the time to address the traffic issues and to do that study and use that data to see how we can move forward. Is there any other board comments? Any from the public?
Can I read something?
Sure, can you come up to the mic or just so that everyone can hear online? Or we can bring it to you. And just state your name for the.
Stephen Swimer, Reaver Circle, and Lionville, wonderful downtown Lionville. I'm so pleased to see that you're looking at the Devon Drive issue and the efforts. And really, thank you for addressing this issue. I've been, I've lived here for 43 years. And I've often been to these meetings over those years about traffic and concerns. And it's great to see you take this on. Thank you. Our neighborhoods, though, are facing overwhelming increase in traffic. The growth in the communities around us, if you just, you all have seen it. It's crazy. It's thousands of homes up here and all around us having, it's going to have a dangerous impact on our community, even more significant than the building explosions of 70s and 80s that we saw. This just seems to be a lot more, a lot more townhouses. You've got Eagle, which is just inundated. You've got down in Frazier, you've got all around us. We're in the middle. So they cut through our township to get home from work or to go to work, to go to the mall or whatever they do. But they cut through our neighborhoods. They don't, for the most part, they don't live in our community, but they cut through our neighborhoods. The Devon Drive corridor is the recreation center of our township. Most of our fields, now there's some other places, obviously, but we've got the YMCA there, you've got schools, you've got Lya. It's basically the hub of our community for recreation. Thousands of our residents travel to this daily, to this area daily, mostly by vehicle. The parks, playgrounds, schools, churches, Lya Fields, our destinations, a few people now in our community walk or bike to because of the danger of walking or biking on our, on our roads along Devon or crossing Devon or Whitford, crossing Whitford and going along Whitford. Very dangerous to do so they drive. So it's all cars now. Many years ago, people would walk to school, the kids would walk to school, they would walk to the playground. That's gone because of the traffic. Students who live 40 feet from the school entrance, I've said this many times, so, but 40 feet from the school entrance are bussed. I still can't get around that. I mean, it's just unbelievable to me, the amount of money we're paying for busing for children for 40 feet to the entrance of the high school. That tells you how dangerous it is and how the school district feels that danger also. In addition to this traffic, thousands of more vehicles cut through our neighborhood to avoid the highways. All those new homes, they're all going to start cutting through once they, they move in. Please make the recreation center of our community and all the neighborhood streets pedestrian and climate friendly. This board, about two years ago, it was before the whole COVID thing, but they joined something about the environment, the climate, that they would make decisions, that they would keep that in mind, that all decisions from the township would try to, to help the environment, not hinder it. And the driving there now certainly isn't a help to the, to the climate. Please make it the center of our community as far as recreation and a safe area for us. Thousands of vehicles travel there every day, cars, trucks, cutting through our neighborhoods is dangerous, certainly not good for the environment. And when school's in session, you got two traffic jams a day. And, and that is diesel fuel, buses are idling, so we have to breathe all that in. But twice a day, and now the, now the traffic jams go all the way down to Whitford and beyond. And they also go to 113 and you see cars out to the main part of the highway, you know, you don't want something to happen there. But it's not, it's not good to have that. Finally, and again, my apologies, my, it's hard to stand here for me for a long period of time. I hope you choose to really look at this. I hope you choose to make it safer for walkers and bikers. The surrounding townships have certainly looked into and are doing a lot. And one of the things that we've seen over and over again, and it will have an impact on curtailing traffic cutting through. When you put raised soft sidewalks, crosswalks, you reduce the speed limit. And you put pedestrian activated lights on those crosswalks because they, people don't see them. They're driving along and we're sitting there, we can, we're right by the crosswalk. They drive right through, people on their phones, they drive right through. Trucks all the time. It's very disturbing when you see a young family like on a Saturday going to the Lya Fields and one of the kids will maybe go back because they dropped something and the cars have already started. That's a disaster really waiting to happen. So please continue to look at this issue. And please do, make this entire township pedestrian friendly. Let's, let's open it up to the pedestrians in our community. Let's not make it easier for people to cut through. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Swimer. All right, I think that's it for Devon Drive. Moving on to business item number two, awarding bid for non prevailing wage maintenance paving.
Our bid is on Thursday, July 7th. That was the second time we've asked for this. And again, we received the bids. So at this point, the township is going to look for the next contractor. We'll keep more updated on who.
Great, thank you. Number three, approval for hiring two police officers.
Thank you. So at the beginning, 2022, we asked the Supervisors of the board to look at showing a number of voting positions within the Police Department. We did a public advertising period, accepting applications, and then we started in earnest with our process in March of this year. Since that time, we have been evaluating candidates. And I'd have to report that we had two candidates about to speak about this evening, that we had successfully completed the entirety of our process. To get to the point of this evening, anybody who is interested in becoming a police officer of the department would have had or gone through a physical fitness test, a written test, three separate oral interviews, a polygraph exam, psychological exam, a physical, and a drug screen. And we have two candidates this evening who are currently employed as police officers today. One of them is, his name is Jason O'Neill. He's currently a police officer of the Westchester Durham Police Department, looking to be related to the Euclid Township Police Department. And we have Timothy Kaufman, who's currently a police officer of the Foxdale Police Department. These two gentlemen have done exceedingly well in the process. And we are happy to report that we are at a point of hiring. And this evening, I would like to respectfully request that the board approve the hire of Jason O'Neill for the potential swearing in date and hire date of July 26, 2022, and Timothy Kaufman with a hire date and swearing in date of August 8, 2022.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Is there any board comments or discussion? Or I'm sorry. Is there a motion for the appointment of Mr. O'Neill and Mr. Kaufman to the Euclid Township Police Department?
So moved. Second.
Any board discussion or comments?
Not for me.
Okay, all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any public comment or discussion? Seeing none? And none online? Assuming? None, okay. Okay, all in favor of the appointment of Mr. O'Neill and Mr. Kaufman to the Euclid Township Police Department?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. All right, moving on to number four, the originating agency identifier, appointment of enforcement officers.
I have to add, I can do this one as well. So every legal enforcement agency in the state has an originating identifying number that's associated with their organizations. So whenever they are filing paperwork through the course, that is all tracked to their particular agency. Within the Police Department, we would often work with the Codes and Enforcement Office with the township when they would have a need to issue a citation for potentially a code violation or a township ordinance violation that pertains to the Codes and Enforcement Office. There is a provision that allows that office to receive their own originating identification number so that for the time of auditing and for a clear route, being able to identify those issues which were handled through the Police Department and those issues for the Codes Department, those two entities have to be separated. And so this is an application that will allow Euclid Township Code Enforcement Office to obtain their own originating identification number so that they can communicate with the Department of Services as they are conducting their normal work business.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion for the creation of an agency? For an originating, originating agency identifier with Tara Giordano, our zoning officer, and Katie Churchill, our assistant township manager, as our enforcement officers?
So moved.
A second.
Any discussion or questions from the board?
Not for me.
Public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Moving on to number five, request for block party. If you can come up to the microphone, just so everyone can hear you and state your name. Thanks.
My name's Chris Hardering. I live at 650 Norwood Road. And last year, we had a block party that was approved by the board and it was a great success. We had all the neighbors, new neighbors, which we had a lot of new ones, and all the old neighbors, we all got together and it developed a big sense of camaraderie in our neighborhood and a support network. And we want to have approval to do it again. And basically, the parameters will be the same. No big loud amplified music. We won't block the street with any large items. And the only difference is we're one to request maybe a little bit longer time. Last year with the, we only asked for three hours and it kind of came and went very quickly. So we were, I think, proposing one hour earlier and, and extend it until about dusk.
Great. Is there a motion for the approval of the block party on Norwood Road on August 13th from 2:00 PM to dusk?
So moved.
A second.
And any board discussion or comments?
I just want to clarify with the chief, is there any issue with the traffic?
No.
Okay.
Be from from Peck Road to Beach Street. One other question is, this just came, I just thought of this is, let's say there was a big rain event that day and it was a washout. Could we have a rain date of the following day on Sunday?
I think that's something the township staff would need to have maybe on the application or is there any issue?
I mean, I don't think we, I don't think there's an issue with that. So if you want to make that as part of the motion this evening.
Or Scott, can you just make that decision? I mean, do you need a board vote for that?
Well, that's what I'm saying. If you want to, as part of this discussion, just note that it was, there's a rainy day that's proposed, like, I think we can.
Okay, do we need a formal vote or just a nod of?
I think they can.
No, okay. Okay.
All right, well, I have no more questions.
All right, and number six, the Jones.
So you got it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Number six, the Jones Pond Park update. Scott, I believe you're gonna give us some information.
So since we last met here at the Board of Supervisors in June, staff and the Park and Rec Committee were able to get a special meeting of the Park and Rec Committee last Wednesday, July 6th, where we discussed the issue, the ongoing issues of Jones Pond, at Jones Pond Park. And we're able to kind of explain what was going on and hear the concerns from the committee as well as the public, many of which occurred here this evening. I think one of the things that it, that maybe we should just go through for people that may not be aware of what's going on. So Jones Pond Park is a man, or Jones Pond, at Jones Pond Park is a man-made pond. And throughout the years, we've had some issues with the water source, which is diverted from the Shemona Creek. During a high impact rain event, Ida, last, I guess, September at this point, this function was just, I don't want to say the word destroyed, but it's just, it is no longer feasible to put this back the way that it was before. And, you know, we've had a lot of talk internally about how we move forward with this. There's a lot of concern about the ecological impacts of the pond and the fact that we have a pond now that's no longer getting fresh water. It's not being oxygenated. There was some sediment impact from Ida that made the pond substantially shallower. And, you know, we, we heard from the Park and Rec Committee and ultimately a motion was made that the board, prior to making any kind of decision, you know, get additional information. Since that meeting, you know, we have not been able to answer every single question that was, was brought forward from last Wednesday. We did ask Dan Daley, the Township Engineer, to attend this evening to try to answer some of those questions. Oddly enough, I did speak with the Army Corps of Engineers this afternoon. They directed me to coordinate with the DEP for anything that may be needed. We would coordinate that through Dan Daley's office. But at this point, certainly want to open it up because I know there's probably a lot of people want to speak. There's probably a lot of questions. But that's where we are right now and how we kind of got here. And obviously, we'll open it up to questions from the board first.
Sure. Does the board have any questions specifically?
So, just, just to clarify the situation with the, the way the pond function prior to the Ida was that there was essentially a diversion that would consistently feed the pond and that the stream is now shifted, is my understanding?
That's the issue was that, I mean, I would have loved to have just been able to go back and put this back in place like we have so many times before. However, because of the impact of Ida, the stream itself has kind of made that impossible without doing some pretty decent disturbance to the streamway itself. What we have received and we have spoken with Tooth Brothers, who is a company that we have worked with before, back with the ponds behind us here, and also Martin Farm Park to do dredging, we got a quote in the amount of $130,000 to dredge the pond, which would bring it back to a healthy depth, as well as install a electric pump that would, rather than divert the water through like, pretty much for all intensive purposes, a long tube, it would pump it directly from the stream. But the issue and why we're continuing to talk about this is because $130,000 is a noteworthy amount of money to have a conversation about prior to making any decisions. So that answer your question?
Yes.
Can we have Mr. Daley give us a little bit of background on the ecological impacts that the pond is seeing now because it is in a steady state of decline with no water source? I'd like to better understand what will happen kind of in both case scenarios? What kind of immediate impacts would be to the immediate area? I know we had some questions at the Parks and Rec Meeting regarding stormwater management and flooding because it is in a flood plain. So if Mr. Daley could just kind of give some more information from an engineering standpoint?
Sure. Good evening. Thanks for having me here tonight. So I've been with the township since 1994, helping out. And this Jones Pond has been a, been out there on numerous occasions over the years and, and working with the Public Works and Parks and Department staff to, to look at this pond. So I'm pretty, I'm pretty familiar with the, the facility and how it operates. It's been a, it's been an ongoing issue here for the Public Works to operate and maintain. And they spend a lot of time and resources to, to keep that pond operational in the current condition. When, when I started here, there was a, what we refer to as a mill race, which is basically a drainage swell that was paralleled Shemona Creek that would actually take the fresh water and diverted into the pond. Over the years, that mill race has filled in significantly with silt and sediment. And we have worked with DEP to, to, to restore that back to maintain this fresh water source to the ponds. Currently, the pond does not receive any fresh water. For the most part, the, all the surrounding area is kind of diverted, doesn't go into the ponds. The, the, the area directly adjacent to the pond discharges the creek, the bulk of the parking lot. The, the, the area directly adjacent to the pond discharges the creek, the bulk of the parking lot area also discharges directly to Shmona Creek. Ultimately here, that pond is, Shmona Creek is considered a high quality stream designation. It's a trout stocking fishery is what it's classified for the D E P Chapter 93 Water Quality Standards. So it is a special protected watershed and our office has been involved with various ponds over the years. And we've had various meetings with D E P over, over the ponds. And generally here, D E P is, is, has, I've been informed by our very staff members at D E P. That the ponds alter the water temperature of, of a stream. So trout stocking fishery that Shmona Creek is, is, it's actually a. It, they, it's, it's better associated with colder, colder temperatures of water. Ecologically here, ponds store, store stormwater manager, store runoff stormwater and basically heat that back up. Cause it sits in there within the, within, within the sun area and, and warms up the temperature. And then that overflows directly into, into the stream, which does alter the. The natural characteristics of the stream and, and it can have negative effects on the, on the, on the waterway on the Shmona Creek. The ponds often, and, and this is, this is theoretical items associated with ponds in general. We haven't gone out to test temperatures of, of this, but the, that we've had a lot of problems with algae growth within that pond. On the algae growth does affect dissolved oxygen levels within the, within the pond, which, which can create negative effects on the, on the wildlife here within, within the pond area. And also ponds are typically known to have a higher level of coliform bacteria associated with geese and other, other bacteria growth. That basically does alter the. Water quality measures within, within a pond area. So that, that's, and again, those aren't studies and, and, and analysis that have been completed for Jones Pond. But they are generally kind of items that are looked at from, from ponds and adjacent to waterways. Ultimately here, the, from a stormwater management point of view here, that pond is, does not. There, there's, how the pond operates right now is, is there's a standpipe within the, within the, within the pond, close to the dam breast. And that, that basically controls the level of the water within, within the pond when it's a high amount of rainfall. And that, that, that top of that standpipe is approximately, I'm going to say roughly four inches from where the spillway is for the pond, the concrete spillway. So you, you, you have very limited capacity for, for holding stormwater management within that pond. So it doesn't really provide a significant amount of stormwater benefits for that. What, what happens is, is as much as the water comes in, it flows right out because there's limited capacity within that facility. To provide stormwater management for, for that area. And whether the pond's filled in with soil material or water material, or water, a cubic foot of water is equal to a cubic foot of soil. And there's very limited storage capacity within that facility to provide a, a stormwater management benefits associated with. With, with, with managing, managing water, stormwater, stormwater within the, within the watershed. So those are some of the, some of the items that I've talked with staff about here. I'm not sure if you have more specific questions here for that, but those are some of the items that we, we've talked about here. And, and over the years, we've, we've had a lot of, a lot of effort going to try to keep that pond operating. Sure. And, and it's kind of a decision here to be made here if you want to keep continuing. Put that, that money associated into the pond or, or not with the balancing that, balancing that effect. So that's my opinion.
Thank you. Does maybe have any questions?
Or comment? I, well, I just wanted to thank Dan for that information and. Acknowledge that a lot of residents are concerned with the wildlife and the delicate ecology of that stream. It's my impression that most of our streams are impaired, classified as impaired in Euclid Township. And am I right, Dan, that that section of Shmona Creek is included in that impairment?
Yes, it, yes, Shmona Creek is classified as an impaired, impaired stream, is not meeting water quality standards is what's, what's listed here. On the D E P, D E P Chapter 93 analysis here.
Um, so I guess what I'm leading to is would potentially. Letting that stream naturally. You know, have a natural succession into wetland or whatever nature is trying to do there already. Would that potentially improve the water quality of that stream?
The impairments are, there's a lot of reasons for the impairments on the Shmona Creek. We've done some, some analysis of that area, have looked through D E P's analysis for, for that impairment. But, but a removal of the pond, it can be a case made to, to say a removal of the pond will help, help improve the water quality for that segment of the stream corridor. You definitely could make a case for, for that.
Okay, thank you.
So if, if we were to, you mentioned dredging and putting in an electric pump and that, that would have to be, we'd have to dig up any area to put a. A pipe. I mean, I don't, I don't know how far we pumping this water is. It's, it's a little bit of a walk to go from the pond to the, depending on where you're going, you can dump it over the, the causeway, but I doubt that's the, the preferred way. But there's no, I mean, I guess, I mean, we've talked about this quite a bit, you and I. And you know, it, it doesn't seem, I, I know there's a desire to go back to like, make it the way it was. And what, what I'm hearing is that there's no way that we can, we can save the pond, but we can't make it like it was three years ago, four years ago. That, that, that there's some significant damage and changes to the, the waterways in the area and it's just going to be different.
It's a much more.
Right. Right. And then it's, it's.
Yeah, I have a lot of thoughts. I just wanted to wait and hear everything. First, I just wanted to say thank you because I've gotten a large number of emails. I know that you guys have circulated a petition with a lot of signatures. And at the Parks and Rec meeting last week, I heard a lot of stories, some crazier than others about the pond and how the public is using the park. And I really, I hear you guys and I, I feel your concerns about it. On my desk at home, I have a picture of my then two-year-old fishing there and I heard all the stories about fishing and I got tons of pictures of fish, which is great because I like to fish. So I was really loving that. I think that this is a really heavy decision to make because on one hand, we have a beautiful. Area where people have so many memories. There's family memories that are created there. I heard stories about decades ago, things that people did there. I know that there are people there on a constant basis. And I'm really, you know, hoping to be able to preserve as much of our passive recreation and natural areas in our township as possible. That just has to be balanced with, you know, a fiscal responsibility and, and, you know, smart planning essentially. And I think that with the way that we're having heavier weather events, the way that we have stormwater management issues throughout the township. We really need to be doing some more long-term planning on how we're going to manage more intense rain events. I think that there are still some questions regarding this as far as what the plan would be if we were to not preserve the pond and dredge it. And you know, kind of put it back as close to as it was as possible. I would like to get the E A C's input because I realize they've not had an opportunity to review this. They've just not met in the time that this has come up yet. And I think that there are some bigger questions regarding what the plan would be so that we can plan intentionally and not just kind of go along. And I don't want to say make rash decisions because it certainly isn't rash, but it's a loaded decision to make. And I understand the value of these types of spaces in our township. So I'm kind of inclined to. Find out more information, get a little bit better direction on where we would be going and what some of the financial commitments would be with that. But I also want to balance that with the caveat that we have a pond that is basically removing itself right now and that there is wildlife in the ponds. And that I don't want it to become in the interim, a mosquito issue or a safety hazard. And so I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I think that if we can take a little bit of time to get a little bit stronger direction on where we're going with this. And fully look at all the options on the table. That would be my preference.
And I agree. I think, I think the one thing that we've talked a lot about the pond, but. If, if we, if we were going to do an alternative to preserving the pond, I, I would like to see some options on what that would look like. And you know, it's a very natural passive area of the township and you know, something that would fit into that is, is kind of how I envision if we were going to move anything. And, and you know, one thing I go back to is that even if we did, you know, $130,000, which you know, would, would get us. That's about, first of all, that's about 1% of our yearly budget, which to me for an air, for, is, is a lot. It's, you know, which I would think it's something we should keep putting context. But it doesn't protect us from another event. Like it just restores it and, and we've seen Ida come through. We've seen these major, you know, two inches and 40 minutes kind of storms come through. So I worry that we're not, like you said, not having a sustainable option here. So, but I'm, I'm happy to hear other thoughts as well. So.
Is there any other board comment? If not, we can open up to the public for any comments or questions. Okay. If you would like to speak, you can, we can take turns coming up to the microphone. If you're online and you have a comment, please just raise your hand and we'll get to you. You can come on up, just that way everybody can hear.
Hello, I'm Art Rothie. I was here last month. And as I explained last month, I was a township engineer for 34 years in Delaware County. So I've run across a lot of things like this. And just, just because a storm comes along and it changes the status quo, doesn't mean that we can't go back to what it was. And create, you know, a nice pond again. You know, I don't know the condition of the creek. All I know is if you fill it in with dirt. The rain that used to go right into the pond now runs off and you've created additional runoff downstream. So it's kind of like, what are you going to do to anticipate the additional runoff by filling in the pond? I hear what your engineer has said, but that's just a lot of, you know, talk about this number and that number and. All I just want is to go back to the status quo, the way it was last September. And reestablish the raceway that went into the pond. I don't think you have to put a pump in. I think you just have to find the pipe and clear it out and continue with that as well as dredge the pond out.
I, I, I want to disagree. That, that's, I, I respect your opinion, but with all due respect. That, that's not that simple. The, the stream moved. We can't just clear out the pipe. I mean, I, I walked it. I've, I've seen it. It's not an issue of just putting in a new pipe and taking it from the stream. It's just the stream moved. That's reality. And, and secondly, up, and I think as an engineer, you're aware that a full pond is impervious for surface. Just like a, a, it, it, you, you can't put more water into a glass of, into a pint of water. You can't put a pint and a half of water. It flows out. So I, I'm just pushing back on the fact that it is, it's impervious. A full pond is impervious. That's, that's just water. But water is a certain density and.
There's a thing, there's a thing called time of concentration. That when the pond starts to rise to go over the emergency spillway there, there's a time of concentration that goes by before that happens.
You fill it in. That's not what you said. You said, right, but you, you, you didn't, listen, I'm, I'm happy to hear, but we, we, I'm happy to have a discussion about our options. But I think we had to face reality about like the physical properties as well. Yes, that's true. But what you originally said was that you would get a, a, a complete runoff on soil, but not on water. And that's just not true. I'm sorry. I just want to make sure we're dealing with reality here.
Right.
The, the actual physical property.
And I just want to make sure that we can go back to the way it was seven months ago, seven months ago. You know?
It was a big storm.
And I think the amount of money it might cost is something that should have been, well, you spent a lot of money on that creek in the past. Look at all the, the stone and, and rock you've stored down there to maintain the banks of the creek. You spent a lot of money down there in the last few years, just trying to maintain, you just did it to bring the trail back because it washed out. Who paid for that? So. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments.
Ruth Osborne, 1370 Dallin Forge. I'm the closest house to the pond. I presented a petition last week, but I brought a copy for you. There's more signatures on it. There's over.
We have, yeah.
I have a copy.
We have a copy. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
It's partly emotional, but partly somebody said during their initial conversation back to the way it was when nobody is left alive. It's been there, I know, over 52 years. So we don't know what it looked like way back when. We just know the pond's been there for a long time and there is a thriving ecosystem in there. Even if the temperature is raised, there's a lot of fish. That heron fish, fishes there. Every week I see them. I saw a few turtles sitting on a log, baby turtles just yesterday. There's a lot of fish in there, turtles, frogs, salamanders, everything. It is a thriving ecosystem. I want you to know that. And people comment to me when they're walking along, they've seen my signs and you know, a lot of people sign the petition that way and it's, people are very upset about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jessica Becker. I also live at Dallin Forge. I actually spoke with Peter Hughes at the Valley Forge Child Conservation Commission. I've just been trying to understand like different things that we have conversation about. I don't want to regurgitate stuff that you've already heard. You listened to the meeting last week. So thank you, thank you. And thank you for taking the time to move through this. We know it's not easy, but it was interesting talking with Peter and he, I said, you know, look, it's been like this for a year. At this point in time, the pond would have dried up if it didn't have a natural spring. And he agreed. So it's something to consider that there is that natural water source there, which is keeping the fish alive. That is really something to just be aware of. And. Since we are talking about preserving potentially the pond, it would be nice to see if we could get some water in there or if there's a way to do that. Just until we figure out what we're doing, because we do want to help the ecosystem that is there right now. I think that is something that's important to consider. Long term. I, I hear what you're saying. I understand. I, I understand. We've had a lot of storm. Issues the past two years. It just urge you to go back. It's, it's not like this every year. It's not even like this every eight years or 10 years. We have had two unusual back-to-back situations. And, and, and just to keep that in mind before we make a, a quick decision, it's something that our society moves towards. We'll get rid of the old and build new houses. You know, but there's something in preserving the past and when we get rid of it, we can't bring it back. And so it is not an easy decision. I believe the E, it was the E A C last week that proposed. Offering grant money. So when we talk about the funding, potentially it's not that amount. That's one point I'd like to bring up. The other point is you have a community here that loves this pond. And I did bring this up last week and I will repeat this part. We are happy to figure out fundraising. And I'm not talking a community day for Euclid Township. I'm specifically talking about this pond. So if we need help funding stormwater management, I'll do that. I'll figure it out. I will help this community enjoy this pond. And if it, if it means creating an event, outreach into contractors, whatever it needs. I will do that. And I'm, I'm happy to rally whoever is willing to do that too. So. I will do that. And I'm, I'm happy to rally whoever is willing to do that too. So I, I just thank you. I know it's a tough decision, but it's, it, it is emotional, but it's also part of our community for a, a very long time. You know, I'm happy to have everybody, you know, here with us supporting it. And thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Leslie Soster and I'm at thirteen ninety Dalen Forge Road. And I say this with all respect, I think you owe it to us on Dalen Forge and the community to fix the pond because due to all the building up above us, we're in a hollow and where's the water going? It's just coming straight down Shimonah Creek, which was a creek when I moved in twenty-five years ago that I could take my kids over. Now it turns into a raging river. And it's not just destroying Jones Pond, but two weeks ago I had EB Walsh across, you know, in my driveway with those tripod and cameras. And I was like, came out and I'm like, hi, what's going on? And he's like, oh, I'm just getting GPS coordinates. And I'm like, oh, and he said to fix the trail. And I was like, well, that was the missing part to fix the trail, which means the trail is broken, which means it's dangerous. It's stormwater management that has taken away our pond. It's taking away the trail. A year ago, um, this time there wasn't a storm, but due to the creek not being a creek anymore, it's eroded away all the banks. We had a tree right below that crossover bridge, right before you get to the Shell Meyer Bridge where a little nervous, a little scary than I thought it was going to be, but, um, the roots of one of the bigger trees was exposed and it just became, it's time to come across the street. It took down, um, the wires, two telephone poles. And by the grace of God, the guy who was coming down our road to get up into Welsh Hares, that tree landed three inches in front of his car. And then the wires were all over his car and he got out and I don't know how he survived that, but we have trees coming down. That's a safety issue. So, you know, the pond, the trail, it's all, you know, due to all the building. And I don't think we need, I, I just don't want to see the pond. There's some emotional stuff there like we all said, but it's part of living in the hollow. And, you know, I would really like to see the pond. Thank you.
Thank you. Plenty of time for everyone.
Good evening. Jim Osborne, thirteen seventy Dalen Forge Road. We are with my wife, been in the home for over forty years and we are the closest property to the entrance of the pond. A question for the engineer, if I may. The information you gave on ponds, that was a general dissertation on ponds in general, not specific to Jones Pond. Is that correct?
Correct. We have not gone out to done any analysis on the pond to regarding temperatures and bacteria or testing on that pond. So that was not
So that, so that information that you supplied to the supervisors would pertain to the pond that's up at Penny Packer Swim Club. It would pertain to the ponds out here in terms of heating water that, you know, goes downstream. So that would happen for about any pond in, in, in a larger sense, that would impact Marsh Creek Lake. I mean, that would also have situation. I'm just in theory.
In theory, correct.
Okay. Thank you. And you are correct. The stream has moved again because of the, uh, we did have a, a, obviously Ida, but it's been moving. And as the storms are getting stronger, much of that water is runoff from Lineville because of all the, you know, the, uh, impervious coverage and all the parking, you know, all the half-empty parking lots up in, uh, in Lineville. Uh, and, and we, we see it. You know, it's actually kind of interesting except for it actually was breaching over the walk, the walk bridges. And, um, so it was, it was pretty severe. And, uh, so I can't argue with the fact that the creek is moving because the Grand Canyon, you know, was made by a trickle of water over, you know, sec- decades. That's going to happen. The pond is a passive park. It's a gem of the, of the township. It is a destination for many people. Ruth and I are up there virtually daily on our daily walks between the Euclid Trail and the, you know, meeting up with the Struble Trail. And oftentimes there are folks, you know, dads with their daughters or sons teaching them how to fish. And you've talked about that too. You know, um, we've seen, uh, families bicycle to there and drop line and have a picnic and drop a line there also. So it is a destination park. And, and being a passive park, it's, you know, it, it doesn't have all the bells and whistles. It's a, it's a very rural, very rustic. It's not something that, you know, you can recreate by putting in, you know, an, a passive park in a, in a, um, industrial area or a commercial area. You know, they, I, I know that there are passive parks being planned, which is a great thing. But they, you know, they just don't have that same kind of, um, niche that, uh, this, this gem of Jones Parks has. So, uh, you know, yes, there's, there's a cost involved, but there's costs involved with re-sodding the, the fields, you know, the, uh, any of the other parks and fields. I've, I coached for L Y A for over ten years. I was on a planning commission in the late eighties and early nineties, an ex officio member. So I'm, I'm aware of, you know, I have some probably not enough. I, I have enough knowledge to be, um, dangerous to myself. So if you take all that into consideration, let's, let's, uh, see how we can move forward and, and possibly maintain this. And if any changes come on, I would urge you strongly to, um, involve the, the folks who live in that area to what is going on in that property. It would be a very big concern for us to wake up one day and find something that's like, you know, not something that we would be appreciate, you know, appreciative of having.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Okay. Do we have anyone else in person that would like to make a comment?
Good evening. My name is Tyler Mays. I live at eight seventy Peck Road. And while my address does say Peck Road, most of my property is along Dalen Forge. Shimonah Creek is actually within my property boundaries. So I'm very interested in continuing to learn about this discussion on the pond, the stream, the stormwater runoff and how things develop. It sounds to me that the hundred and thirty thousand dollars is an opportunity to not just restore the pond to what it was before, but to actually improve upon it, potentially make it deeper, um, give it more stormwater capacity, give it an electric pump to keep more water flowing through it. And again, some of these things that have been said regarding ponds may or may not be relevant to the way Jones Pond actually is. I say all these things because I'm concerned. I watched Ida go and it turned the creek on my property into more of a raging rapid that went up over Dalen Forge, flooded my neighbor's house across Dalen Forge, flooded through my lawn, through my wetlands. So what I'm here tonight to do is express my support for repairing and improving upon Jones Pond, doing whatever it takes to make that happen. I'm curious, first and foremost, why 10 months after the storm happened, nothing has been done to repair or at least, um, address the situation where no water is flowing into that pond. If it is indeed just sitting there stagnant and heating, um, that seems to me to be an environmental concern. I'm also very interested to know if there are disaster relief funds available, if that kind of path or avenue has been investigated. That could be a question that may have an answer or may need to be investigated. I don't know. But I'm also very interested in being an active supporter, a fundraiser potentially of what it would take to restore and improve upon the pond. Um, and I'm also very interested, um, just in the grand scheme to hear what the plans are to deal with the stormwater issues that we are facing. I am very confident that Ida is not the first nor the last major rain event that we will face, um, here in our township. And, um, yeah, that's about all it is. I'm sure I've forgotten a thing or two, but again, I just want to bring my support here tonight, uh, to restore Jones Pond. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. My name is Rita Jones of Jones Pond. I have to, I have to ask permission to speak because I'm no longer a resident.
I don't see why not. Love to hear from you.
I had to ask you.
Thank you.
I've probably been around a little longer than the township engineer, but, uh, he knows of which he speaks. The stormwater issue is just dramatic. I mean, I'm not sure how you folks and other townships are even going to deal with it, but you need to. And Jones Pond is just one little piece of that. When we sold the pond to the township years ago, there was never any thought to stormwater issues in that, although the thirty-five years I lived there, it came into my house. I was at fifteen thirty-one where the wisdoms live now. Even went so far as to build a moat around my house to protect it from flooding and it still floods and it will continue to flood unless there's some miracle about stormwater management that comes along. But the pond is just, as someone has said earlier, a gem of the community. It's going to take a whole lot of money and I echo the sentiments of the last two people about there's other ways that we can come up with that money. It is just too important and too much of a treasure to lose. Uh, if we look at it only from a monetary point of view, that stream has moved almost every five years forever based on what has happened with the stormwater and the, the mill race or the race where it comes in has been destroyed many times. So this was probably a little more dramatic of, of a destruction. But the township has always stepped forward along with D E P and made the changes that needed to be made. I'm just asking you to look at all the possibilities, see what else is out there as far as funding, grants, et cetera. Community people. Just to see what can be done and really pause any decision for a long period of time until you continue to gather information because it is just too much of a treasure to lose. So thanks for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have, we have an online comment?
This is Kim Collins. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Great. Thank you. I, I had a couple of questions and a couple of comments and, and I support everything that everybody else has said. The pond, it's a very emotional subject for some, especially those who live closest to it, but it is in fact, a quality of life issue, I believe, for the entire township and for all of those who use the Euclid Trail and the Struble Trail. By that same, in, in that same vein, I understand too that it is an expensive solution, but it, it is only the first pass. I, I haven't heard that we've put out a request for proposals for different solutions or opportunities. I, I know that there are, there, there must be some way possibly with grant money, possibly with fundraising that we could save this. One percent, I, I know in some respects it sounds like a lot, but when you spread that across an entire township for what it brings in, in enrichment to quality of life, I'm, I'm not sure that it's really that much. As I'm sure you've all looked around and, and those of us who are longtime residents have looked, running through Exton anymore is starting to look more and more like King of Prussia. And, and those apartment buildings and townhomes and, and zero lot line kinds of things are moving closer and closer to us. And the little places that we can preserve for, in this case, effectively very, very little money when it comes right down to it. I think if we can, we, we should at least try. And I, I agree. No, we, we, we should ask that you don't make a hasty decision, but that we ask for help. We ask for more ideas from people who have faced the same thing that we're facing now. Maybe somebody has a novel idea of, of, I don't know what, but a, a solution that would both save the pond for future generations and minimize the cost. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Any other comments from the public? Is it something to add or just a question? Just real quick?
I just want to say something in conclusion. I, I wish you would just move forward on trying to figure out how to restore the pond because there must be a spring in it or something where there wouldn't be any water at all. But move forward, find out what the cost is rather than go through temperature and analyzing this and analyzing that. That's all I'm asking because people do matter over and above money. Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you. Yep.
Hello, I'm Scott. I live at fourteen oh one Dalen Forge Road and, um, businessman, I think that we could, uh, look at this and try to look at it as a win-win situation or try to make it into a win-win situation. We, we have a pond. It is collecting water, has an ability next to a stream. Granted, it's only a couple of inches until, uh, the, the pipe kicks into where the overflow goes in, but maybe we can redesign that. Maybe we, if we're going in there, we're dumping some money into it to, to get it all up to snuff. Why couldn't we design it to where it could be a catch that could hold a whole lot more water? And that, and that could really start to help out. All we ever seem to do is developments and things of where, that are adding water to our stream to where here, maybe we could have a situation that we have an opportunity to create something that could actually catch some rainwater and, and help out and keep what we have going and, and keep everybody happy. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate to it, kind of in closing, if anyone else has any other comments. Again, I hear everything that you say. The comments specifically about, you know, the trail there undergoing work and surveying. That's absolutely true. I mean, we have some really sensitive areas in the township that the township spends a lot of money and resources on to protect and to restore. And every time we have rain come through, the crews are out there in conjunction with the county and the state doing that work to restore it. But it's an ongoing thing. And so I think Jones Pond is, you know, one piece of that puzzle as we look at the greater stormwater management plans that you guys have all alluded to. Stormwater management is certainly not unique to Euclid Township. Every single municipality, borough and city is struggling with stormwater right now because it's true. We, as we develop our spaces, we have more water runoff. It has to go somewhere and the water usually wins. Kind of the movie spoiler. But I hear you. And I think that that's why we really want to have these opportunities for comment and for discussion and to pause and just kind of make sure that we're moving forward in a meaningful way with the information and with thoughts for what might happen in this scenario and what might happen in this scenario. And it's going to be ongoing. I mean, we're going to be talking about that stretch of the Struble Trail and the Euclid Trail forever. Uh, it's coming up now. The staff is already working on, you know, watching that stream encroach on some of those closer areas. And it's something that we'll have to deal with. But I appreciate your comments and I just want to kind of reiterate that right now, we, we're just trying to gather as much information as we can so that we can make an informed decision. And that's how I see it from my perspective, at least. I can't speak for the whole board, but that's where I'm at right now. Um, I think it's certainly something that the township staff is always looking at, different grant funding options, relief possibilities for any work that's done there. I mean, for me, that's, that's some of the questions that I've asked for them to come back with more information on. Um, and again, that's just part of looking at the full picture and seeing what we might be able to do. Not just now, but five years, six months, 10 years from now, when this happens again, because you're absolutely right. We're going to keep having the same conversation. And I just want to make sure that we've thought beyond just that one next step. But I think that the staff has done an excellent job with looking at available funding and planning for those type of infrastructure investments. So certainly continue to do that.
So, and, and I'm a hundred percent in agreement with everything Laura said. I mean, and I'll just add that, you know, I think we're all, all under the same, I mean, I think we've all enjoyed that area of Euclid Township. I mean, I, I know I took my kids for a bike ride just a couple of weeks ago along that area. Stopped at the stopped at the pond and parked there. And so, I mean, we're all using that. We all appreciate the natural passive beautiful environment around that, the sound of the stream running, the 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 big trees and all. No, no matter what that is what I, my goal is preserve that that beauty, that 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 tranquil area within the township. That's it's not that far removed from, you know, one thirteen, you know, a few miles up the road and 100, but but like you just feel like you're in a different world. And and so I I I get that in a, no matter what happens, that's one aspect that we are all in agreement that we want to preserve. And we just say with, you know, the resources we have, the situation as it is, what is the best path forward? And that's what we're trying to figure out.
Can I just add onto that?
Go ahead.
Um, I agree both with what Vice Chair Obenski and Supervisor Miller have said. And just want to reiterate that, you know, I appreciate all of the residents' emails and the petition and people coming to the meetings and speaking their minds and their hearts about this issue. And from my standpoint, I it's definitely not just about the money. There are a lot of impacts that you can't quantify, like the enjoyment, the passive space, the ecological impacts. That's definitely, we will consider all of those things when making a decision. I would like to make sure that we identify how the pond impacts the local ecology there because as many people have stated, the stormwater issue, it's the hindsight's 2020. We've built up a lot of neighborhoods not thinking about where all the stormwater is going to go. And if we really focus on now, now we know more about how the environment works and you know, how to work better with it instead of against it, I think that will, in the long run, benefit us all. So I am looking for more information about how we can improve this area to work with the stormwater and with the local wildlife and the stream and preserve the beauty for the residents as well and the passive beautiful space. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we'll be looking for some more information and be sure to keep everybody posted where we go from there. All right, moving along to announcements, all meetings will be at the Township Building unless otherwise noted. We generally have yoga in the park on Wednesday mornings here at Baird Park outside at nine thirty. However, we will not be having yoga this week. On seven fourteen, the Historical Commission will meet at seven thirty P M. On seven fifteen, the Euclid Township Industrial Development Authority will meet at nine o'clock A M. On seven nineteen, the Community Day Committee will be meeting at seven P M. On seven twenty one, the Environmental Advisory Council will be meeting at seven P M. On seven twenty seven, the zoning hearing board will be meeting at seven P M to discuss target sign variances. On August third, we have a planning commission meeting at seven thirty P M. On August eleventh, we have a historical commission meeting at seven thirty P M. And our next Board of Supervisors meeting will be on August fifteenth at seven thirty P M. And just to note that that was pushed back and rescheduled from August eighth. So that's a slightly off off week for Board of Supervisors. And with that, I will open up the floor for any other public comments or questions if you want to come up to the mic.
Chairman Obenski, sorry, I just want to add the date on there for the Community Day, just so the public has one more opportunity to mark their calendars. Community Day will be held in August, I believe, August twentieth, but I'm not sure. Scott, what's the date?
Anybody coming to the Historical Commission meeting might already know this, but it, I noticed, and I never noticed this before, that it said all meetings will be at the Township Building unless otherwise noted. Historical Commission is at twenty one North Village Ave, obviously open to the public, so.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments or questions? I believe that the E A C has been asked for input on this issue. The agenda will be out and posted on the website by Monday evening. By Monday evening. So you can check on the website. They'll show the agenda and you'll be able to tell if it's on there or not. No, you're okay.
Two month one meeting. So twenty years ago, I attended the hearings in the firewall converting the junior high school to a high school, to a senior high school. And many of the community members there had done, pleaded with the board, this board, to not support them, to not allow that to happen. They were concerned. We were concerned about infrastructure area, running up fields and and a number of other things. It seemed like they were forcing, forcing it rather than building a new building, okay? Whenever they, it was decided to do it, the proposals were accepted and we have lived with it. We've been good neighbors for 20 years, never complaining about practicing, games, daily practice, never concerned about that. Until a couple of years ago, when the band started having practices at up up to ten o'clock at night directly across from our home, maybe sixty feet. And that was, you know, not an everyday occurrence, but it happened often enough that it was quite aggravating to us. Went over and I asked if they could move or if they could, they have an electronic cowbell. And if you've ever seen that routine about more cowbell, okay, it it drives you crazy. You will not stop using it, the new director. So they did move. They moved between the elementary school and and the high school. So now you got a great echo chamber of brick buildings. So we still get that noise, the electronic cowbell. They practice, it's unbelievable how they do it. They practice 12 months a year. They practice outside. We've had snow and they're out there practicing Saturday mornings. They're practicing. It's a great activity. Don't want to be against that, okay? But sometimes enough is enough. Researching the the township noise ordinance because of this, really discovered something that is, in a way, who's upset it? We are not protected by the noise ordinance in my community. Euclid Township has an ordinance for the residents to protect them from noise pollution. Except us. We don't have that protection. Someone had to go to extreme methods to to have that written in, but that's, you know, we're either there at this point. What I'd like to ask you is could you give to us the same coverage, if you will, protection as the rest of our community? I mean, how can you say that we're going to protect the community from dangerous noise? And say to some people, except for you? And and again, we, you know, we, I lived at the band for 20 years. It was great. They practiced through the day. They went home. Everything was fine. We had our evenings that was quiet. Now it's constant. And they keep, they they continue to change it. So, you know, they can do what they want to do, but I think we should be protected by the same ordinance that the rest of the community is protected. How can that even be legal, council? Is that legal to do that?
Well, I'd have to, I have to look at the order. Which community are you that? And you're saying that's exempted out of the order? Okay, we'll look at that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So how can you say to the township, we're going to protect you except for you people over here? You guys, everybody's equal except for you guys, you're a little bit less equal. And again, I wouldn't be here, but they just won't stop doing it. And it becomes a health issue. It becomes a health issue. So I would ask you, will you put us into that wall like everybody else in this town?
Mr. Swimer, I hear your concern and I know we've spoken about it directly. I never said that, just for the record. No, I understand the noise concern and I can hear the bands. I'm, I've lived nowhere near you and I can hear it as well. I can hear, and I used to be in the band, so I I feel it from all sides. But I am interested in knowing, you know, the historical reasons for exempting that area. I think we're all curious about that and certainly we'll take a look, took a look, take a look into it. I also just wanted to mention that as we have been having discussions with the school regarding their upcoming changes, that is specifically an area that the staff has already raised as a concern before I even got to them. So so these are all things that we're looking at and I hear you. I I understand.
I'm helping with this. I I think the band's a great thing. And the activities there, it's not a problem for us. The traffic is, I mean, obviously we talked about that road earlier this meeting. I mean, the buses and everything else that's going on. Kids moves out. They can't have home games for the most part. They can't have lights on up room. That's a long story. You guys can do your research and how that happened, okay? It wasn't all clear, as all else, all right? But the fact that you have a group of residents excluded from a protection, I don't think you want that to happen. But council, I mean, willing to listen to your ruling on our perception of.
Well, and and I I'll tell you, the question's going to be less about whether it's legal because from a policy perspective, you can exempt out certain things from Norris. The question is whether the board wants to look at that and decide whether or not it needs to be amended.
I would hope so, because we never are hearings on it. And I wouldn't have really known about it unless I had to do research because it's been a clock and a night to cowbell.
No, I understand. I would certainly be learning more. Thank you.
Oh, and one more thing to the G over here, you've added two police officers. That's a wonderful move. We have, we sometimes just become used to having this kind of security in our community. Look at the news. Most of places around, they don't have that. We have an incredible department. It's got, it's an incredibly stressful job for them and they need more resources. So.
Thank you, Mr. Swimer. Any other comments?
Can you come up?
Just so everybody can hear.
School board's coming before Planning Commission next week. This would be the perfect timing on that issue. And they're coming to ask for some plus.
Yes.
The the school board was at the Planning Commission this prior week, but they will certainly be back for more. So that's an issue that everyone will have an ample opportunity to comment on. Keep an eye on the Planning Commission agenda that comes out and there'll be a lot of discussion following that in the coming months. Thank you. Any other public comments or anything online? No? Okay. Well, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
There a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you, everybody.